Okay, folks, it's seven o'clock. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, March 19, 2024, meeting of the Mound Planning Commission. This is a special slash rescheduled meeting and agenda. Roll call, please, Jen.
Commissioner Archibald?
Present.
Commissioner Rosen.
Present.
Commissioner Wacker?
Present.
Commissioner Sastrum?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Councilmember McInnes?
Here.
Okay, addressing the agenda, you all received it by email. We do have two amendments to the agenda. The first is the Planning Commission work plan and project list. You have that in front of you on your table. It was also sent out this afternoon by email. And the second amendment item is a, at request of staff, a discussion of meeting timing. So the Chair would entertain a commission to approve the agenda with both amendments.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the work plan and timing. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, we have two sets of minutes to consider. The first is the January 2, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the January 2nd minutes is written.
We have a second discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, nay. Motion carries. We also have the February 20, 2024, special meeting workshop minutes. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve the February 20th special meeting workshop minutes is written.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, planning case number 24-03. Review recommendation, proposed amendments to mixed-use regulations in City Code, Section 129-139, consistency with 2023 amendments to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Boy, that's a mouthful, isn't it? All right, we first, I think, want to address a discussion regarding acceptance of mixed-use development and appropriate building heights. And then, once we do that, this was pre-approved with your boss, once we do that, we'll get into the bulk of the, of the issues, okay?
Sure.
Ms. Rita.
That was my introduction. So as was stated, the, there was a couple of questions as we were preparing amendments to the code. We were realizing, as we were actually working with some inquiries, that because of the recent comp plan amendment, that we also needed to adjust the actual mixed-use districts. So we started to go through and try and identify where those standards should be changed. And in that, we discovered and felt like there wasn't clear direction on a couple of items that Chair Good mentioned, one being how we might handle mixed-use developments, what would be acceptable or not, and how we would handle building heights. So I'm just going to give a little context, I don't have a presentation or anything, because when we actually get to the code, it might be easier to have the code up above. Relative to acceptable mixed-use developments, what we were, I think it was clear in the discussion during the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, that we weren't looking for multifamily or apartment buildings. So that was kind of clear, I think that's what we said when we did the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. However, there may be situations where someone may be proposing commercial on the ground floor and apartments above it, and it might be of any size or scale, and that's something that I don't think was really clear to us on how we wanted to move forward relative to that. For example, could you have one of the stores that currently had, previously, had an apartment above and they wanted to reestablish that apartment? Is that okay? And we should be clear in the code about that. If someone wanted to come in and do mixed-use in the center and townhomes, kind of rowhouses attached to it, is that okay? If someone did a big apartment building with commercial on the ground floor, which is probably not as likely, it's hard to get the economics to work. But again, we want to be as clear as we can be about what you want and what you don't want, so that when we're having conversations with folks, we have the code that clearly says. Relative to acceptable building heights, the standard pretty much in the community is 35 feet. The code originally had both 35 feet and 50 feet. The reason we wanted to bring it up, we could have just dropped it to 35 feet, however, just as a note, Artesa's not going to be 35 feet, they're higher, they're under 50 feet, around 50 feet with the way it's calculated. And so, again, if we're going to have commercial development or a mixed-use development, do we want to stick with 35 feet, which is about three stories, two and a half, three stories is pushing it? Do we want to have any more flexibility? And so that seemed like not, the rest of the code sections that I had seemed a little bit clearer to us about where we were headed. Those two, we didn't make any suggestions, because I feel like we haven't really had a discussion about that, I think. Does that cover? Okay. Just making sure if Sarah had any other points. So, does that make sense as a context and background of what we want to discuss this evening? So we know what changes to make? And we don't have any direction, there's, there's no right or wrong. I can't tell you that you should or shouldn't do anything, so it's really a community discussion about what you're looking for, communicating back towards Sarah and myself.
Okay, fire away.
Fire away? I think you have to fire away.
Well, what do you want to address first? The...
I think let's talk about uses. What, in terms...
Acceptable mixed-use development?
Yes. Is mixed-use development acceptable? Is there a limit to what that can look like, be? And I just need you to kind of describe it, and then I get the challenge of trying to write that down. You know, is it, we just want a few units, we don't want a lot of units? If someone came in and proposed, I don't know, we don't really have a site like Artesa left, but something larger where they assembled something and they were going to build that with commercial on the ground floor, is that okay?
Does this have, sorry, does this have to be in the commercial zone, or can this be in a residential zone?
We're only talking the mixed-use districts.
Okay.
It's the only districts we're talking about. So Commerce, Downtown, those different districts.
So has our staff suggested guidance on this?
What do other cities do? You asked that.
It's hard, because other cities have allowed multifamily apartments, so it's a little clearer to me. And I'm not, that's not a negative, that's just a statement.
Right.
It seems like at the minimum, allowing smaller scale makes sense, especially since we already have mixed-use buildings in town, we at least want to have that. I don't know about bigger scale. I don't even know how I'm going to write that, if that's what you tell me you don't want, but I'll figure it out. I'll give you some suggestions. So it's a little bit less clear because of knowing that we don't want the bigger-scale apartments, which is totally fine, but then, does that mean we don't want, if someone came in with a project, to redevelop something?
So this would be residential business or a combination of the two?
Well, what we're asking about specifically is if you were going to do residential and commercial combined.
Oh, okay, okay.
Very specifically. Because I think if someone came in and wanted to do an office building, we haven't really commented on that, that seems like it fits with what we've been talking about. It's very specifically, I think we've had, you know, inquiries over the years, obviously, we've also, we've had, you know, re-converting things that had been apartments on the second floor on existing buildings. I think I've seen, and I haven't seen as much as Sarah, I think I've seen one where it was like commercial in the middle, like in a building, and next to it was the, like, townhouses, rowhouses, you know? Is that okay? Is it about scale, more so than anything else?
Well, if you look at downtown right now, Outlet B and, like, where the old dentist office is?
Yep.
That's kind of going to have to be something, a mix of this. And I guess, as I've looked at this, I'd be comfortable with commercial on the bottom, you know, with an apartment on top, and I'm also interested in limiting the height to no more than three-story. I think, Sarah, you've been in a couple of our council meetings where we've had a couple of people get up and talk about the four stories at Artesa, and there are residents that would love to see it, nothing else go that high.
And that's, I'm sorry to be really particular, so apologize, because obviously, I'm going to be writing this, so the more questions, the better my writing gets, closer to what you want. So I apologize, if it feels like I'm like, nickpicking, but... So when we say that, if you had some places, because of the water table, you might have to have parking, and then residential above, you're talking three stories complete, so if you had to have parking on the main floor, then you'd have two stories above.
That's what I'm suggesting.
I'm just making sure, cool. Again, not trying to be, I'm just trying to make sure I write it correctly, so I sometimes have to ask clarifying questions.
And I'm sure everybody has thoughts on that as well.
I was going to say something similar.
Yeah, okay.
I think from my end, I am in favor of allowing as much flexibility as we can for developers to be able to intermingle commercial and residential to what they see the market wants. For me, especially where the mixed-use districts are, this idea of having commercial and residential together makes a really nice walkable downtown experience, especially where mixed use is concentrated. So we heard the community guidance that we don't want large apartment multifamily, but outside of that, allowing the mixture of those two uses is something I'd be for.
Are there examples from similar lake communities, like Excelsior and Wayzata, that are examples that we would want to emulate and those that we wouldn't want to emulate?
I think then you're looking at design, probably, in that case.
But not height?
Rather, and height.
Isn't height in Wayzata, what is it, two stories above the commercial, along the Lake Street?
It could be, I think there are, it feels like there's four, I mean, I know I have a picture in Wayzata, but...
I'd like to be, you know, careful not to, you know, we're Mound, we're not Excelsior and we're not Wayzata, so trying to keep our Mound charm, I think is what we're kind of trying to decide here.
So it sounds like, mixed-use makes sense, mixed-use on the same side, even if it's like an individual commercial building and like townhouses next to it, but not necessarily apartments next to it. I'm just going to pose this, not because I'm suggesting it, but just to help me clarify. Say that someone came in with a building three stories, but still the size of Artesa, and it had ground floor retail, would that, you feel like, not be supported in the community?
Does the comp plan already have a number of units maximum per area that we would want to have guidance for? Couldn't we enforce it with something like that?
It has a maximum, yes, but...
That would kind of make it, that combined with the height?
Could make it, but it's clear, it's helpful if we can be...
Yeah.
Specifically clear. So that there isn't questions that we have to, like, one, but, but you are correct, there is a maximum density that you can have on a site.
So Rita, are you asking if there just needs to be a mix of residential and commercial on one site, but they don't necessarily need to be stacked? So you could have a small townhome complex with a small shop on the side of it?
Yes, that's not the question I asked, but it sounded like you were headed that direction.
Oh, okay, I was trying to restate your question.
My question was, if you had a building the size of Artesa, but only three stories, because I know you don't want that, and the first floor was commercial, but the size of the building, think of it, you know, it's like...
Oh.
A block long by a block long, is that okay? Or is that bigger than we want? Because that's really apartment feeling, and it's just that there's ground floor retail. Again, no right or wrong, just that, to me, is what I'm trying to regulate, is say, if that's not what we want, then I want to be clear.
Right.
That it doesn't matter, that there is a threshold that you tip, that we don't want buildings bigger than the size, or walls that are longer than, I mean, I'll have to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, I don't think we want mansions downtown. I mean, I think I like the idea of a two-story limit, but as long as it looks decent. I'm sure there's going to be some architectural designs that we have to approve, but as long as it looks decent, we are a small community, and I don't want to have, you know, three, four stories, one, two, three, four, two, three, you know, it just doesn't look good.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, yeah, two, sounds fine to me, 35 feet.
So that's different, you said three, now we're down to two.
Well, I was, I said three based on the 35 feet, which you said was two and a half, three-story.
Yeah, so 35 feet.
35 feet, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to keep 35 feet, I will try, and you're going to see the language again.
Right.
So this is just to give me a sense, so I know what to actually try and achieve in the writing. Any other last comments on that?
But Artesa is larger than 35 feet.
Correct.
So it would be smaller, they would be the...
They would have to go the height, and what I'm feeling like I'm hearing from you is we also don't want the scale. We do not want a building that that is that big, even if it had ground floor commercial. We want smaller structures.
So that's a one-off deal?
That's what I'm hearing, is that correct?
So can you give us an example of what the limitation on sort of footprint would be?
I have to figure that out.
The footprint would be limited to a square footage, and if you needed to be beyond that, you would have to have discrete structures?
Right, I think it's going to have to be individual buildings, can be no whatever, I have to figure that out, how to write that in such a way that it works. But yes, that's what I'm hearing you say, is that we don't want to have those kinds of things, which, again, just, just, I just need to understand, so I can try and write it.
Okay, more feedback for Rita?
Mr. Archibald really looks perplexed for a second. Not that I don't want going on, but you know that look, I'm thinking.
The gerbils are spinning, man. I'm having a hard time, I guess, if we already have limitations on density, and if we have limitations on height, and then just obvious economic considerations, doesn't that already impose a limit on all this, like?
It might, I need to think, that's, that's, it might, do enough, but that's what I want to figure out.
And so how much, how do we even get more explicit than that?
Well, I think that, sorry to interrupt, but I think that the breaking up of a very large structure that is, you know, the size of a cruise ship on a large lot, would be a way to impose an additional constraint on it, that would change kind of the architectural feel of a large site. So go back to this, this property over here that we talked about a few years ago, I forget the name of the...
Commerce Place?
Yeah, Commerce Place. You could put a remarkably large single structure on that property if everything else was wiped out. And so do we want to have a 300-foot-long or 400-foot-long structure? Because it's probably the most economical way to put in that. And then, if you have discrete structures and you have to break it up and every one is, you know, less than 6,000 square foot, footprint or something like that, then you end up with separations required by the other building code that would actually limit the use of the site in that manner. So it'd be an additional constraint, over height, over density, over permeable surface coverage. Does that make sense? That could make sense.
And I want to, it may be enough, one of the things, though, is sometimes people go straight to the zoning code and don't, don't make a stop at the comp plan on their way. So it would be nice to make sure if we can, as much as we can make things clear, what we're looking for, what we're not, so that they, you know, when they call staff, they will hear it, but sometimes we don't always get all the information at the beginning.
So I think there, there might be an architectural benefit to that idea. I hadn't considered that, because when I started this line of questioning, I did not understand that's where you were going.
Yeah.
But it probably would make the value, the property less valuable, because there's additional constraints on it in terms of what can be placed there.
So I will have more information, I just wanted to make sure that my understanding was correct, so that's where we were headed, and that mixed-use didn't change things in some way. And it also is nice to confirm that apartments in a mixed-use is okay, because we hadn't really talked about that before, and I know, our feeling was, we've had it, it's just trying to get that scale right, so...
Okay, do you have enough to go back and formulate some suggestive language?
Yes, sir. Other than, I do want to make sure we chat about the information, starting on page 10, the actual code provisions that I recommended changing. And you will see that the things we discussed today are not reflected, so like, the height will have to change, because we hadn't had that discussion yet. There are strikeouts are where we're proposing to delete language, underlines are where we are proposing to add language. One thing that's a little interesting caveat is we wanted to have provisions such that if any of the existing multifamily structures were wanting to redevelop at some point, that we had some mechanism to guide them on like what, how they should redevelop in the future. So that's why we did not strike multifamily in its, in, complete, which is probably also why I feel like we want to make sure to be as clear as we can, and we can restructure these if they're not clear. But, so on the first page, we just talked about existing structures and making sure that anything, any multifamily that's going to be redesigned would have to follow design standards, site design standards. I did move around on the next page, page 11, under item D, site design. The numbering moved around, because I didn't want to talk about any new mixed-use buildings or replacement buildings, some of the things that are about that at the beginning, and then talk about other things at the end, people kind of, you know, may skip those elements. So I just moved up screening of ground-mounted equipment or outdoor storage, and then we applied new mixed-use buildings or replacement buildings should have bicycle storage or private usable open space for those residential units. And then we left everything else the same, assuming that you could have potentially mixed-use buildings needing some of that. My one exception might be some of the architectural design, if we are only going to three stories, I believe there's one of these that maybe we don't need quite so much, I'm trying to remember, or we could keep them all, it's just, if you only have three stories, you're not as concerned about the bulk of the building anymore, because it's not getting very tall, or two and a half stories.
How many buildings, and I don't expect you to literally know the answer, but how many buildings do we have in Mound that are more than three stories? Is Artesa literally the only one?
Is Chapman, what is it? With the underground apartment? That's how we count that one. Not that many.
I can't, just a couple.
It was originally envisioned that downtown would have more.
Right.
Yeah, had the original...
Right.
Harrison Bay.
Parking, right?
Harrison Bay. Yeah, I don't know how my shit sticks up, but yeah.
It doesn't stick up.
That one's behind, so you don't see that one. Any other, so these aren't too many changes, anything that jumped out as folks of concern?
Did, did we say that we were simplifying the mixed-use districts to one type? Is that something I remember from the latest comp plan amendment?
I think we took out all the names of the districts.
Okay, so the fact that there are two...
But we might be able to take away, you are correct, in the fact that we may not need the corridor district anymore, because the main distinguishing factor was height between the two districts, so I will take a look at that. If we can make it easier, by all means, we should do it. So I will look at that.
Just so I understand, on page 11, we have crossed out number five, six, three and four, that's just the numbering?
It's just the numbering, correct.
All right, so are you proposing that we address this tonight, or do you want to make some changes and bring it back?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Good, if you wouldn't mind? Well, no, that can work, never mind. I was looking at one use that, we changed a couple of uses to conditional use permits, but that should be fine, I was thinking we had to talk about it, but I'm good.
Okay, you're good, you're going to bring it back?
Yes, sir.
With changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or issues with this from council? Commission, excuse me? Okay.
Thank you, Rita.
Yeah?
We next have Planning Commission work rules. You've got those in your packet. These are work rules that have been in existence since the beginning of time. They have been changed a little bit.
A little bit here and there.
Here and there. One of the amendment items for tonight is a topic of interest for Sarah regarding timing of meetings, which would change the work rules, so let's talk about that first.
Sure. Members of the Planning Commission may be aware, but that the city council is going to be changing their meeting start time from 7:00 to 6:00, starting soon.
Probably May.
April or May. And I think yours is done by ordinance, I believe. Our, our time, and we also may have an ordinance issue as well, but in our work rules for the Planning Commission, it outlines all of our basis of operation, how we, how we start meeting, what a forum is, what our regular meeting is, when things get carried over, those types of things, elections, all kinds of various activities, meeting protocols. And I think one of the topics that we wanted to bring to the Planning Commission, similar to the council, is if the Planning Commission has interest in also considering a time change for your regular meetings. Again, that all depends on people's schedules, people's commute times, family commitments, but the, because the council is considering those changes, we thought that we would bring that to the Planning Commission as well, and also might be going to the other boards as well. So I just, I, because that is included in the work rules, I thought this was an opportune time to talk about that. There's, there's no need to change if you are wanting to stay at 7:00, or if you want to move to a time, we could certainly entertain that as well. Obviously, there's commuting, people have jobs, people have children and families and those types of things, and, and you're volunteering already, so whatever your commitment is, you have to be able to get here, so everybody's schedule's a little bit different. So I just wanted to bring that out, to see if there's interest, if there's not, then, then we will just set that aside. With regards to other things in the work rules, if there are other topics of discussion or change or evaluation that members want to talk about, we can sure do that. This project was tabled at our meeting in January to this meeting, to allow a little more time, because we had a full schedule, and we also, I think, had some folks that were not able to attend. So with that, I will stand for questions, or answer any questions, or share comments. Some of the things that we've changed in the past on work rules, attendance was talked about a handful of years ago, what happens if the chair and the vice chair are both absent, we had that. Happened one, to us one time. We also have what to do if we have a lot of applicants, which is a really good thing when you have a ton of applicants, and how there's an opportunity to kind of scope those applications down. We dealt with how to deal with a current survey for an application, if we can accept things that aren't fully updated. We, we added in that we are now being videotaped for reproduction purposes. All kinds of little things have been added in over the course of the years, so I'll stand for questions. I don't know how people feel about the 6:00 time, if that's something you're just interested in talking about, or just leaving it the way it is at 7:00, that's fine, too. But with that, I'll, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, let's take it in two pieces, let's discuss the timing of the meeting first. Thoughts on that?
I like consistency across the board, so like, if the council's doing 7:00 p.m., I just think it's easier for staff and for calendaring purposes that all of those boards kind of have that same time, but that's me, I like consistency.
So the council is going to 6:00?
They're going to 6:00 p.m., yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, I'm just saying, just generally, I don't, I don't, you could tell me it's 5:00, and I'd say, that's fine, we'll go to 5:00. It's just, I like the consistency of it, I think it's easier to remember, you know, the times than it is, oh, planning meets at 7:00, or council meets at 6:00, so I, I like consistency, so. And I, I mean, if I'm going to make a commitment to be on a board, even though I'm volunteering, I'm still going to adjust to the timing of it, so that's, that's me personally, but that's easy for me, because I live down the road and I'm always home, so.
So I assume you would keep the three-hour block, just shift it down an hour, is what you're asking for? Because right now, it's 7:00 to 10:00.
11:00.
11:00.
7:11, so it's a four-hour block, yeah?
That's, I think, the latest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would shift accordingly.
Yeah, I'm okay, I mean...
Other thoughts?
My preference would be to keep it at 7:00, I have a long commute, it would affect my ability to commit to this.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, is if we're going to do it for inside this year, I, I would feel a lot more comfortable if the decision were unanimous, instead of just majority, since folks have committed to a certain time, though I would be open to doing it for over, starting that next year, for people who have a next term, so if they commit to it, they could do it at that time.
It also affects my, so I get home, I have dinner with the family, and then I can come here, I would actually be more excited about 8:00 p.m. start than a 6:00 p.m. start.
No.
Just telling you where I'm at.
Ouch, that hurt.
I guess I have some concerns about just community accessibility and the ease of citizens who want to partake in this.
Yeah, thank you.
It strikes me that, I guess, I think 6:00 is probably better from an accessibility standpoint, just because we are a community with a lot of young families that, that parents have to get home, but if other people have a different take on that, I think that should certainly be a consideration.
I thought you were going the other way.
I was too, and I would say that's where I would see it, I would think the community would be the... would be the seven o'clock start time.
Yeah, would be better for.
I have a long commute, which I may be an anomaly, but, so.
My family's all around us.
Yep, I'm flexible.
Yeah, here would be work, that would be the only issue, but I can, I kind of, mostly I make my own schedule, but within reason. So I'm, I mean, I'd go to six o'clock, give me some more evening time. But I'm just one, one voice in the choir.
Okay, other thoughts on this?
Outside of being really curious now about how that's gonna change council participation, I mean, I don't know if there's a way for us to say, stay to seven, see for the rest of the year how it ha, impacts the communities coming in at the council meetings. If you say, we moved it to six, and now we're seeing thirty percent less people, then I would say, let's stay with seven PM. And, and I don't know if we can do something like that, but that would kind of be my thought, is because again, I really liked the idea of the community being able to make it, which I hadn't thought about. Although I think I saw it in a little reverse order as you, but, but I appreciate bringing that up because it made me think about it. But that's, I, I, you know.
So are you suggesting staying at seven PM through the remainder of the calendar year, and then address this issue again next fall for a potential change January one?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I've got the timelines in my head. I'm just saying, as a, kind of a method to understand how the community recoils from that time change, but using the city council as the example.
How about we split the baby in six thirty?
Nobody does anything at six thirty.
Why not?
It's really hard to remember.
Or I suppose another approach would be keeping it at seven, and then seeing how the effect of the council's time change impacts a variety of issues, and then readdress this after a period of time.
We can always revisit it at the end of the year and see, you know, see how it goes with the council.
Sarah, can you share all of the thought process that led the city council to making that change?
Well, I can shed light on that.
Yeah.
A lot of it had to do around family and sports. There was much more time getting home from school, getting home from work, eating, and then getting kids out to sports. Another consideration definitely was staff, because they just sit around in their office until seven o'clock. We were fortunate, most of us have somewhat flexible schedules, and we did, we have had this out for about a month and a half. That's why it wouldn't happen till May, because we've been consistently putting this on our agenda that we're, you know, so the residents can get used to the idea of this switching, and we haven't had any feedback that's negative. So that, that's what led us to considering the six o'clock time, and it, we did bring it up almost two months ago, so.
So the city council didn't have any considerations that wouldn't also apply to us? Everything you just said, I think, applies to us as well as the city council.
Well, staff.
I think it's cool with the staff, too.
Now, how would you feel? I mean, do you want, I mean, does it matter to you whether it's six or seven? Doesn't, from a staff, staffing perspective, from an overtime, for anything like that, doesn't really matter?
It, it doesn't matter. I mean, I, I would say that if you can, it makes for maybe a little earlier departure.
Right, right.
You know, if, if we start at six, and then we're a three hour meeting, we know we're leaving at nine rather than leaving at ten.
Right.
But you bring up a good point. It will be interesting to see how participation is going with residents when we switch it to six.
And for better or worse. I mean, I wouldn't look at the decline, you don't know. The timing could mean more people attend.
Okay, are we ready for a motion on this, or are we gonna let it sit for a while and then reevaluate?
It's a motion to table this topic until October and keep the work rules as are.
That could be, or, or a motion to adopt a six o'clock start time. I'm just throwing out the alternatives.
I'm making that motion.
You're making the motion?
I'm making that motion to table the topic until October.
Okay, we have a motion to table this issue until October. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have discussion about that.
What's gonna change in October versus now?
I think we'll have more information on how it's impacting from the city council side, plus or minus. I mean, if they start in May, that would give us May, June, July, August, and that's six months of seeing how it's working with them, if there is any type of positive or negative shift with participation from the public.
From the public.
I suppose we could argue that having it consistent, starting it at the same time as the council, having it more consistent, and then if they determine that the six o'clock is wreaking havoc, then it would do so with us, too. And then we would, could change it back to seven and follow suit with them.
It is easier, it sounds like, to do that with the Planning Commission, but for the city council, it is a longer process. So we're trying to avoid, you know, confusing the public, and we've put a lot of thought into this. So, you know, we're hoping it's, it's positive for everybody, but I agree that we'd be a great guinea pig to watch and see if, if it comes up a plus or minus before, you know, the planning makes their decision.
Okay, we have a motion to table until October. Further discussion?
I would be, I guess I'm a no vote on the motion to table. I think we should follow the lead of the city council. Like, the, the reasons that they stated for their changes apply equally to us, and we should follow their lead.
Okay, so let's take a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, let's revisit the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
In favor of?
Tabling.
Tabling until October.
Tabling until October.
Okay.
All right, those opposed, raise your right hand.
We have a tie. Although.
Let's see, who's the negatives?
I'm whatever works for everyone.
Well, you can't say that.
I think the motion carries.
I'm with four.
How?
Three, four.
So, let's, we can, raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion.
Four.
One, two, three, four. If you're, your hand is not up.
Okay.
If you're opposed to the motion, raise your hand.
One, two, three, you're not voting.
Three.
It passes.
All right, it passes. So we wait until October and look at it again. All right, thank you.
I feel like it's kind of conflict of interest.
One, one of the things that we do in the commission that we've not had to do a lot is that if individuals who voted against the motion would like to express their reasons for doing so, they have the latitude to do that.
I think we've already talked about it.
So, any further comments in that regard?
No.
I don't have any.
Oh, we're good.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for offering.
All right. Let's go back up then to the Planning Commission work rules, excluding issues regarding time. You've had the work rules in front of you. Are there any particular aspects of the work rules anyone would like to bring up?
Is it formally addressed? And I, this sounds like a silly question, maybe it is. I, it's not clear to me, I guess, whether Consulatewoman McEnany is a full voting member or not. I assume she is.
She is. She is a.
I have always voted on this particular vote, I kind of feel like it's a conflict of interest, because.
Yeah, she is a full voter.
You're abstaining?
Oh, on the timing issue.
You're recusing yourself.
Yeah, you're fine, that's fine.
You can abstain.
Yes.
Yep, you can always abstain.
Yep. But I, I think it's a good question.
Is that clear in here, that she's not just liaison, but a full voting member?
That's a good point.
Every seated member shall be eligible to.
And she's a seated member?
It, it, on, I mean, you don't have to change it, but I think your question is, is relevant, because if you are in other communities, that's not always typical, that a council person votes, which is probably your experience as well, but it's, it is definitely different from place to place. You're probably my only one where you actually vote.
So the suggestion is that the council member be considered a full member with vote? Is that the suggestion?
Well, you are doing that, it's just clarifying in the rules that actually says that. I think that's right.
No, I'm, I'm talking about an addition.
To that language.
To the work rules.
I'd be in favor of anything that removes ambiguity, because I had a similar question.
And we have, we want to have an even membered body that way, for majority.
Okay, are there other work rule issues that anyone would like to raise? Chair would entertain a motion to approve the work rules for 2024 to include clarification that the city council member is a full member with vote. Would someone like to make that motion?
I will make a motion that we amend the work rules to clarify that the city council liaison is a full voting member.
And adopt the remainder of the work rules for 2024?
Correct, and adopt the remainder of the work rules as written.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion?
I will just throw in there, I very quickly pull up city code, I think that is made clear in city code, section two dash two nine two, that the city council appoints one of their own to be a full member of the planning commission. It's just not in our work rules.
Does it say a full voting member, or just full member?
It says, shall select an ex officio member of the commission from among, from among its own members, the said council member to be appointed for one year commencing in January of each year. It's not totally clear, but I think the implication.
Well, it would be a belt and suspenders if we include it in our work rules, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Any further concerns about that?
So I think with that, then, the motion to make that change is unnecessary, and we should, which I think is what's on the table right now.
I, well, you can do whatever you want.
I think it still can be in there.
I don't know that ex officio member means voting.
Means voting member. I was questioning.
I can clarify, let me read the whole thing. The planning commission shall consist of nine members. Eight members shall be appointed by the city council and may be removed by a fourth vote. The council shall also select an ex officio member of the commission from its own members. So eight people are appointed from the community at large to the ninth as a member of the city council, which would suggest that they are a full member. And so it is nine, including? It is nine, including the rest of the city council.
Okay, we have a vote, pardon me, a motion on the floor. One alternative would be to vote against the motion, and then reconsider a different motion that excludes discussion about the city council member. Or we can leave the motion the way it is, which would in essence just be clarifying for our work rules what the language in the, in, in the city rules state. So, further discussion about that? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, which is to, A, clarify that the city council member is indeed a full voting member of the commission, and B, approving the remainder of the work rules for 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right. We next have Planning Commission work plan and staff project list. That's this document that was in front of you on your table. And turn it over to Sarah.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your discussion on that last matter as well. For your review and consideration at our meeting this evening, we have the work plan that was put together and talked about cooperatively with the members of the city council at our concurrent special meeting workshop on February 20th. And as part of the process, the work plan is, once it's put together, after the concurrent meeting, the planning commission evaluates it, makes sure that it is in good form, and then makes a recommendation on those activities, which is moved or advanced on to the city council for formal action. Included on the list for the planning commission work plan is code, code updates to various sections, and that's been ongoing, as well as ADUs. And ADUs are on our structure discussion for a little bit later. And then on our project lists, we've got three things dealing with property maintenance, study of environmental initiatives, some of which are on our discussion item for tonight, and then ongoing discussion with study to become an age-friendly community. These are the topics that were, rose to the top at our meeting on the 20th. If the planning commission feels that it's in good form, a recommendation from the planning commission to the council to formally adopt, the work plan is in order and recommended.
Okay, you see the two items under the 2024 Planning Commission work plan, Updates to City Code, and then Evaluation of Overnight Living Quarters. That would be a work plan for the commission. The request by staff is that we recommend to the city council that this work plan be adopted. I hear a motion to do so.
Can I ask a question?
Everybody understand what we're doing here?
If I can just ask a question, is the city council gonna expect, expect us to have any timelines associated with this, or just the approval of those topics? I mean, we're already in March, so I mean, it's, it's gonna come up quick, so I don't know.
They didn't give us, they didn't give us a directive for schedule.
Okay.
This is how we've had it the last couple of years.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wecker.
Mr. Chair, I.
Further discussion?
I'm sorry. I was gonna make a motion, so anybody has discussion, please. Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that the planning commission recommend city council approval of the 24 Planning Commission work plan and the 24 staff project list as outlined in the addendum to the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, are we going to have any discussion about the project list or not?
That's next.
That's what I thought. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay.
Rita looks confused.
I did, because I thought you did both the work plan and project list. You only did the work plan?
Well, we approved the topics on the, on the work plan.
Okay.
The, the one sheet.
Okay.
Well, we approved the project list, but we didn't approve the items on the project list.
Yes, correct.
Okay, just for clarification.
I'm still confused with that.
So I think, I think his motion.
Dip this one?
I think his motion was harmless in that regard, should I use that phrase. Okay? All right, so we have staff project list, and who's gonna address that tonight? That's the review and recommendation on ADUs, solar and electric.
I was ready to stand up.
You were.
It was me.
It was you.
Okay. She said I could sit, but I can't see you. I'm just not used to it.
You could sit when you need to go.
Yeah. I'm just so used to seeing all of you face on, it's too weird to sit to the side and not talk to you. All right. We all ready? Lots of conversation. Just gonna start it. All right, so, we thought we would try and keep momentum from our discussion at the last, at the joint meeting, and really work through as much as we can. As you saw in the packet, we did not draft up specific regulations, because there was some discussion that we needed to have on each of the topics, to make sure we were headed in the right direction. The information that I provided, I'm gonna walk through, and I basically have a slide that mirrors what you have in the packet, just so that everybody can see the same words. I did note that there was a numbering thing that got off, so that's formatting-wise. You'll see on the slides that everything is labeled, you know, one, two, three, four, five, and then A, B, C, D, so that if you need to reference something, it's easy that you can say what it was. I do want to clarify that in many cases, they, there, the choices are not necessarily mutually exclusive. In some topics, they are. If you're gonna pick something, you're not gonna. You're going to pick something, you're not going to pick more than one, but some of the topics, you can pick multiple within there, and we'll have that conversation. And I also did a little bit of math to help us hopefully with some of the conversation because the size question is a hard one, especially since I gave you so many choices. And so I did a little bit of math to help just give us some framework for it. So you'll see when we get here. So we are doing the topics in accessory dwelling units, solar energy, electrical, electric vehicle charging. You saw, and the conversation will be the biggest in the first topic, and it'll shrink down as we move to topics. So I know I'm going to wear you out, but hopefully that means by the time we get to electrical vehicle charging, there just aren't that many choices, so it won't be so hard. And I apologize, there's just a lot to be said about ADUs, and they are fairly impactful, positive and negative, that they can have on properties, so it is something that we want to carefully talk about. So just a reminder, accessory dwelling units means a self-contained residential unit that has a living room, kitchen, and bathroom. It can have a bedroom, it cannot have a bedroom, there's not a specific statement. When you say ADU, that means it has a bedroom or not, it can be a studio. They are permanent installations that are part of the property. Right now, the way you'll see in a second, we typically consider them part of a single family home. Other communities may look at ADUs differently, but I think that's the starting point that most communities start with, is that it's related to a single-family property. Lots of different terms that we've used in the past, but ADUs is the common term that we are using. The only exception in California, they call them junior suites, but otherwise, in the country, they generally call them accessory dwelling units. So there's 12 topics, some are easier, some are harder. My thought was to talk about the topics in order and get agreeance and not walk through all 12 and then go back and talk about them because they're, they kind of build on each other, and if you decide something, we can just move on. But some of them, you may or may not be able to decide today, you may ask for additional information, and then I'll come back with that additional information. I just wasn't always sure what additional information would be helpful. So I assume zoning district wise, we just want to allow them where they're a single-family home, so we don't want to allow them when someone has a duplex, or a townhouse, or a row house.
Correct.
I assume we're going to start small, but if you want it to start differently, let me know. That's kind of my assumption based on our last conversation.
Can you just refresh my reading, does the current city code regulate these at all?
Uh, no, not in this format. The, the way the current city code is that, like if you had a a part of your house that has a bedroom, a kitchen, they have to be connected, so you can like open a door and be connected. If you do these
For the household.
For the household, if you do these, you would be actually having like a firewall separation, it could be locked, it could be a completely separate unit that is, is not tied together. Right now, we require them to be tied together as one household unit.
So we're doing this, creating new work from scratch, basically?
Could be. That's my understanding from our conversation.
Okay, I just want to, I need to remind her.
Yeah, no, but you always have, you know, there's no guarantees. You might go down this path and go, yeah, no, we don't want to do this. And that's fine. That's what the conversation is about. Any concerns about the single families, sons, right? Okay. See, check, one down, 11 left. My understanding, this is the ADU form. When we talked last time, it sounded like folks were amenable to the idea that you could have a basement conversion, a converted garage, a detached structure, an attached structure, that all of those things are possible, that we didn't want to limit. Is that correct? Yes, okay. Two down. Here's some pictures, in case you want to see some picture pictures. So basements on third stories, a lot of different, on top of a garage, different ways you can do it. Quantity, our assumption is that you just want one, you want to limit it to one per single-family lot, we don't want to have more than one on a lot.
And this would just be one ADU, but not one accessory building?
One ADU.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, actually, that's part of the conversation coming up, but yes.
So I'm getting a shed. It feels like a shed or a storage unit.
That's, yeah, he's saying that can you have a shed and an ADU?
Yeah.
I assume so, but there's a conversation coming up.
Oh, okay.
A few things that are kind of related. All right, lot size. Do we care how big of the lot, how big the lot is in order to have an ADU? So many of the communities I work in, we just say you can have an ADU, we don't look at lot size, it's just, but you may have a desire to do that. So we gave you some options. A is you would allow them in any lot, no matter the lot size, which means we wouldn't put this in there. We wouldn't have to put a statement that said that, we would just say they're allowed. You could have it that they're only allowed, which meet the lot size minimum, so if it's like the R1 district and it's 10,000 square feet, if you had a lot that was under 10,000 square feet, you couldn't have a ADU or 6,000 square feet. Note, you have a lot of non-conforming lots and mounds, so there would be impacts if you went that route, but it is an option. Or you could say ADUs are only allowed if you have a lot of a minimum size, and pick a number. Again, you'll have lots that can do it and lots that can't do it. So it's an option that we wanted to at least have you think about.
So let's say we don't have a minimum size explicitly, what are the other practical constraints that are already in code, like hardcover requirements?
Setbacks.
Yeah, all those other things.
Okay.
That's why I typically don't see this, but it is something that other communities do talk about, so I didn't want to like leave things off just because I didn't have, you know, this is for you, not for me. So I feel like we wouldn't go down this route, but if you wanted to, we could.
A is kind of a problem for me because it seems to contradict that other building code that I think we would defer to on everything else. So A seems to contradict, it might lead somebody to believe that permeable surface is not
I wouldn't include that.
Okay, right.
If we do A, we won't state anything in the code. It'll just be
Right, right.
It'll, it'll just be
So my point is, I don't, I don't like A, so.
You don't like the fact that you can have an ADU?
No, I don't like the wording of that.
Oh, yeah, and I won't
I think the second one makes more sense.
So you're okay, the concept is fine.
It's allowed, but you have to meet all the other requirements.
Right.
Yeah, so you just reference back to all the other code.
Yeah, what it'll be in, and your code's structured a little different, but we'll have a section, I don't know where, that says like accessory dwelling units, and it'll list all the standards. And so in the use table, we'll indicate the fact that it's permitted, but you have to follow the standards that are in that section.
Yes. What's the difference between that and B?
That means, that's what I was talking about, so if you did B, then it would say you can have an ADU as long as you meet the minimum lot size of your district. So if you're R1, you'd have to have 10,000 square feet to do it, if you were R1A or R2, you'd have to have 6,000 square feet, and if you were under, you aren't allowed to have an ADU.
And what would be the risk on that, what's the downside? You said there would be some
You have a lot of lots that are undersized, and so then we're saying that
Don't have any ADUs on it.
No, that don't meet 6,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet, and then we would be saying you just can't have it. Where, whereby, if you have a house and you wanted to do an internal ADU, do we really care if your lot is undersized or not? Probably.
Put a second floor, second
Yeah, or if you're going to put in the basement. If you have a garage and you're just going to pop it, the garage one's probably kind of hard, depending on the pitch of your roof, but in theory
Kind of look at that as an existing condition.
Yeah, that
Lot size.
That would be the existing lot size. Why would that change? I'm, I'm not following here.
This is something you could do.
Okay.
But you don't have to. Some cities do want to do it because, like they would say, oh, 6,000's too small, we only want to allow it if they're bigger than 9,000 square feet, or if they have a big enough lot. So, to me, it sounds like, because you're not, it's not resonating with you, we could move on and say, we're good, but I don't want to move until we're
I, I think A makes sense. I think we're all kind of saying the same thing, actually.
That's what I think, it's just I don't want to move on too quickly so someone feels like I'm speeding past, and they don't get it. Okay, let's keep moving, because it's going to get harder.
Can everybody see this okay? Do I need to dim the lights, are we good?
I can, yeah, I can see it fine, I'm not sure that I
Agree with
I'm not sure I agree with A.
Prefer B.
Do you want to, let's ignore the language, just look at me. Do you want to have ADUs on lot, do you have a certain size that you think lots need to be in order to have an ADU?
I think if it's a non-conforming lot, we don't want to intensify the non-conformity.
Okay.
I agree.
Another structure.
Or even by allowing
So if it's 5,990 or 5,000 square feet?
Sure allowed to put a garage on a lot that doesn't meet minimum lot size.
You're allowed to put a garage on a lot that doesn't meet
We generally, in MOW, we mostly consider
Lot size
Lot size and existing condition that isn't the fault of the person that currently owns it, because most of the time, they're created
Conforming additions to non-conformity.
A long time ago.
Yeah. That was straight lining back on the line.
Have you seen anything where cities say a percentage of your, your lot size? So if you have a, you know, you can have a, have an ADU that's a certain percentage over your
We're getting to that part.
Okay.
Into the, like, the size of the ADU, this is just, I think that's what you're saying, right?
Well, I'm just, again, the size of the ADU shouldn't be, uh, yeah, no, I am jumping ahead, sorry.
No, I'm just making sure, because obviously I thought, well
I'm jumping ahead.
I spoke too quickly, maybe you were saying something else.
Well, I said my piece, I, we can move on.
Okay.
Do we have to make a decision? No, just move on, don't make a decision here?
Well, I think
We're just offering feedback, I thought.
No, I mean, I have to write it, so if, if this is, if this is something you're passionate about, then you probably need to win your colleagues over, so I didn't write it the other way. And I'm okay. Or we can start there and you can see the whole package and then decide if it still bothers you.
To use Chair Good's language, I'm thinking of kind of a built and suspenders approach because I probably can't imagine all of the ways that this will be gamed. But if I think about something that is sort of a non-conformity, and then you add in an accessory dwelling unit, which presumably comes with other things that are covered in later sections, I would like to have all of those kind of layered up so that we aren't making it easy to intensify a non-conformity because we have a lot of things that don't conform and mount. So that's, that's my position on this.
Okay.
It's, it's a layered approach to try to not have things in the city that we think aren't what we want.
And I
That's my rationale.
To some degree, some of those other things will limit the intensification someone can do.
That's my point.
Yes.
I would like to have a layered approach to that because I, I feel like a lot of times these systems are gamed, and we have seen people try to test the limits of, of the code in the past, or, or the comprehensive plan.
All right, so I will write it that way, but recognize you may push back at it at a later meeting.
Good.
Does that sound good?
Good.
Yes. Okay.
Fine with it.
Okay. Setbacks. I'm going to skip. I debated last time, do I do size, setbacks, but maybe we need to talk about size first, and then you can talk about setbacks. So I'm going to skip up to, to the size. So this is the one that's the most complicated, and I actually have five separate slides because it's that complicated. Size is tough because there's so many different sizes of houses and so many different things we're talking about. So we may get to a point in this conversation that we need to recognize that we want to differentiate between a detached structure that's like an accessory structure on the property versus what's inside a house. Those are layers, different ways we can do it, so I just want to put that as a preamble because this is the one that I think, I feel like when I'm working with cities, that we may struggle the most with because it's hard, because some, some lot, you know, some houses are small, and we don't want to make it so they can't do it, but some, anyway, there's all that kind of thing. So I'm going to walk through these before we go back, just to make sure that we understand the differences. So this one really focuses just on detached ADUs, shall meet the structure area requirements for an accessory structure. So below is the existing code. It says, buildings shall not exceed the lesser of 3,000 square feet or 15% of the lot. The table to the right isn't something you don't have in your packet that I added, I just did math in Excel, so hopefully it worked. That said, if a lot is 6,000 square feet, then your maximum building is 900, because it's the lesser of, 3,000 or the lesser number. So if you have a 6,000 square foot lot, the biggest size you can have is 900 square feet. And that's an accessory structure, not an ADU specifically, but we could just use it and say, we want to use the same standards for an accessory structure like a detached garage or a shed as we do an ADU. Also in your code today, it says, an individual building shall not exceed 1,200 square feet. So that means even if you are a 10,000 square foot lot, the maximum building you can have is 1,500, that's the total area of all accessory structures on a lot. Only 1,200 of it could be in the first building, and the other building would be 300. Like you're still limited in size of structure. Hopefully that's making sense.
Yeah.
Okay? And then the third one is how many you can have on a lot, so if you have, basically, generally, the R1A and R2s can have a maximum of two accessory structures or buildings, and lots bigger, so the R1 district that have 10,000 or bigger can have three. These are all existing code provisions. I'm not proposing anything, but one option is to just say detached have to follow the general regulations we already have in place, as opposed to coming up with new regulations. So that's an approach that we use in many of our communities. I'm going to just, any questions on that? You don't have to weigh in on it, because I'm going to go to the other ones, just to make sure. Okay, so another approach that some people use is that detached ADUs shall cover no more than some percentage, 15%, you know, I have the numbers, you can pick the, the reason I did blanks is like, I don't know, you can pick whatever number you want. I've seen 15, I've seen 20, kind of depends on your size of lots. So that's fairly straightforward, but doesn't kind of link with your other accessory building. Sometimes we do, an ADU shall meet a percentage of the principal structure. When we use this one typically, it's more used for those internal ones where we don't want to have the ADU be so much bigger than the principal structure itself. You know, we want the principal unit to be the principal unit, and you want the ADU to be a smaller one, and so sometimes people use that. The one challenge we sometimes have is if you're going to put it into a basement, and you have the floor, you know, the footprint of your basement, 50%, you, like, they have to do some convoluted way that it's not all ADU, because if they use the basement, the first floor and the whole basement is the ADU, then if you hit 30%, then now you're going to have a problem. So we have to be careful if we do that. That's just an example, if that makes, hopefully that makes sense
Can I
With my hands. Yes.
Just a clarification, so is this ADU shall not exceed a percentage?
Yes, it could be, yes.
Oh, okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, you're right, I might have dropped the word.
Okay.
Be no more would be another word, yes, you're right.
I'm not a realtor, but I just have a question. Do we know, how does this impact square footage on homes? If it's a detached dwelling, can you say, can I, when I sell my house, say it's, that's the extra square footage? Because I look at that and I think, gosh, 900 square feet, that's quite a bit. So I, I just don't know how this, I guess I just don't know how it relates to property value.
I don't have a specific answer to that question. I don't think I've ever had it asked quite that way, but it makes sense what you're asking.
Not that I'm for or against it, I'm just trying to understand.
Right. I'm sure it's counted in it, like you can acknowledge it, and as long as it's also permitted by the city, that you can do it.
Right.
But I don't know specifically.
And Rita, are these all square feet? These are not square feet per floor, this is just square feet of the lot, or is it square feet per floor?
This one is square feet of the principal structure. I have had cities that talk about it being the footprint, and I have talked, had cities that talk about it being the entire square footage. So that's a clarifying point we have to verify. The other ones are about the lot. So A and B are about lot, C, we've moved into the principal structure. So that's where it gets confusing, because there's different ways of doing it. Sometimes cities don't want to deal with any of those percentages and trying to pick the right percentage, and they just straight out say, an ADU can be between this size and an ADU can be between this size and this size, cause that just felt easier, instead of having to figure out, cause they recognize some houses are bigger, some houses are smaller. You know, they just pick a number so that it's easy. Um, I gave you an example, uh, that's just an example. Um, I've seen other numbers. The E one is, uh, some have said that they shall meet minimum building code standards. It's a nice thing to say, um, when I've been in there, it's not like there's a specific number, and that number sometimes changes as you go from different building codes, so. I said it's approximately two hundred and fifty square feet. That's, um, at least unless others know differently, that's, last time I looked was like a year ago, and it wasn't like I could go in and find the specific number and pull it out, it was like, you had to add together certain things, so. Those are the options. I think the, kind of the underlying question is, first of all, do we have a concern about how big they're gonna get? Is our concern about how much space they're gonna take up on the lot? Do we wanna use ADU size to regulate it in some way? Do we wanna use setbacks, cause that's another mechanism to also limit things? Yes?
If you have an ADU the same size as the original structure, whether it's above, below, or to the side, what differentiates that from being a duplex?
That is always a fun question when we do those. Um, one is that the owner of the structure has to be the owner of the ADU, it depended most likely when we get down to that, and they have to be there, versus a duplex usually can be rented, um, out.
Both sides can be rented?
Right, right, I, I th- I assume, we're going down, I don't know, it's number eleven or twelve, talking about how you have to be on site when you have an ADU. But that has been a conversation in other communities, is what tips you from being an ADU versus a duplex. And it is fairly close.
On, on the minimum side, is there, uh, state building code guidance on how small you can make a unit that someone lives in, in general?
Generally, that two hundred and fifty.
It's the two fifty, okay.
I-
Ish.
I had a similar question, cause I was kinda struck on the previous slide where the table went down to two forty, and I'm thinking-
Yeah.
About what, what that would look like.
I just did pure math on that one.
Oh, I understand, but, um, it, it-
It's about two twenty-five to two fifty is what it talks about in the building code.
It, it made me think about, I think I would like to have a minimum, not for the state requirement, but just what would maybe represent an oddity that would make a structure kind of weird, cause we have enough weird things to mount, so, um, having a two hundred and forty square foot dwelling, it feels like a large closet.
But that could be like a garden shed, or-
There you're living in.
Or, I mean, I'm trying to understand too, what this AD is, but it could be a garden shed, or-
Mm-hmm. A tiny house is generally under four hundred square feet-ish, when you do those, like, and I'm not, we're not going down the tiny house route.
Right.
Generally, a tiny house, kind of when they talk about it, it's less than four hundred square feet-ish. So, and if you, we also haven't talked, this is where they're all interrelated, so it's a little hard, cause we haven't actually talked about occupancy either. Um, and occupancy is tied to square footage, also.
I, I don't know if you were done, but I kinda like a combination of, of D and one of the earlier ones that specified a percentage of the principal structure.
This is the principal structure one. The other ones are lot, A and B are lot, C is principal structure. D is just a straight out number, so we don't have to do the math. Cause one of the challenges of the math on principal structure is then we have to figure out, or somebody has to prove to us how big their house is, which isn't my favorite, I'll be honest.
And one thing about the, the relation to the principal structure, though, I would potentially be okay with capping it at a hundred percent, that it shouldn't be bigger than the principal structure, but on the minimum side, if you have a smaller house, and you wanna have, you know, aging-friendly ADU, I wouldn't really wanna, that, that, if the house is relatively small, I could also make the ADU even more small if we went on the thirty percent side. So I, in general, I would probably be okay with a perhaps hundred percent cap relative to the principal structure with respect to footprint, um, but I would rather see the minimums being in absolute square feet.
Yes.
Yeah, so following D.
A lot easier, yeah.
So I'm hearing a minimum of whatever number we pick, two hundred and fifty, three hundred, four hundred, maybe we have to have the occupancy discussion? And this is where I can come back and give more information. And then a maximum of some sort, that's no more than so much of the principal structure, footprint is what you said.
I-
But-
Yep.
We have to be careful with footprint or total structure area, right?
We do. Footprint would be generally smaller if you have multiple floors.
Correct.
Would be the smaller of the two options.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, let's just go on, unless somebody has a strong opinion. Percentage of... Okay, because the occupancy may be included later, anyway. Um, occupancy is also a tough conversation, I think I referenced that when we were at the meeting. Um, done in different ways. I think the biggest concern that I've had about occupancy, I think most people I've worked with end up with some type of occupancy number. They're always a little bit concerned, though, if you have a family, cause what happens when they, uh, have a kid, and then they're out, kind of, but that's just no way around that one, so just put it on the table. Gone through this, and that usually comes up. Um, Mr. Heald, looked like you had a-
Did you skip parking?
I skipped stuff, yeah. Oh, no, I haven't gotten to parking yet. I'm on seven. I have to go back to setbacks.
No, she's on occupancy.
I think I own an occupancy.
Yeah, no, I'm on just, how many people do we want? Do we wanna limit how many people? So, one choice is no more than two occupants per bedroom. That's just to quantify it, that's not literally someone's gonna go in and make sure that they don't, like, that's just, if you have a bedroom, then you're gonna have two people, if you have a studio, then you'd have two people, if you have two bedrooms. Some people have actually, um, there should be no more occupants than the number of bedrooms supplied. The ADU should have at least this much per square feet for the first occupant, X number of square feet additional occupant. On the bedrooms, I've actually seen, uh, minimum number of bedrooms in one community, where you had to have a bedroom, I'm not advocating that. Um, there are different approaches, so, and if you're not concerned about it too much, then we also don't have to have one. All of these, you don't have to do these, these are just things through our experience, we know. People typically wanna do, particularly as it relates to parking later, to limit, or to not have too many people in a-
Well, do you have a suggestion?
Um, I think from an administration perspective, it's a lot easier for staff to have so much per bedroom, cause the idea of having to get exactly square footages sometimes, it's harder than you might think. It's written down on a, on a drawing.
Do we regulate occupancy like this for primary structures, or homes?
How about for apartments? Apartments?
What?
Do we regulate it for apartments?
The building code gets into occupancy.
Yeah, but not zoning.
Not zoning.
We generally don't get into it, we allow whatever it is that the building code allows.
Like, I understand why you might, why this might seem attractive, but it also seems really hard to enforce, in a way that, you know, footprint and whatnot is not. So I, as much as I appreciate maybe where it's getting towards, it, it just strikes me that we can have more effective restrictions. We have more effective control in some other areas than trying to regulate occupancy.
If, if that's true, and that's outlined in the building code, then this, then I would be okay striking this.
There's, I will double check it, my recollection, I haven't looked in a while, was that you have to have so many square feet per person within a, within a dwelling unit.
Okay. Could, could we sort of tentatively say that, and, and get some feedback from you as you come back, is that, is that okay?
I'll come back with the information.
Okay.
I'll clarify it with Minzbeck, cause that's always the best route. And then give you that information, and then we can decide if you wanna do something about it, or if that's sufficient.
Sounds good.
And, and just a, one last question, is this primarily on the time when you're building, or over the life of when something's used? That if someone's a neighbor and someone notices that there are four people living in a one-bedroom, maybe you have a big-
It's over the time it's used.
Okay.
It would be a mechanism. It's an easier way for people to know that there's a limit, but even then, they'd have to call in, you'd have to then figure out how big it is before you could figure out if you could have four people, so it's not a correct.
And then move that stuff out, and the city comes and says, okay, you're good, and then once the city leaves, the whole bag.
Yes. Awesome, okay.
Is there also any regulation, not, maybe not in our space, but I'm just thinking from an occupancy standpoint, uh, for the requirement of, how do I say this, like, heat, like, I mean, if we're gonna expect to put a structure, say it's a separated structure, and we're saying, yeah, it's okay, you can go ahead and have up to two people in one bedroom staying in there, but would city code or building say, yeah, you gotta have heat in there, because you don't want people starting fires with heaters?
No, it'll have to meet building code requirements.
So it would meet the building code requirement, not dwelling needs.
It's a door, it's a dwelling needs. Yeah, yep. It'll have additional building code standards, sprinkling, smoke alarm.
Okay.
All the things that you, we all have to have in ours.
Alright, thank you. I assumed, so I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't wanna miss anything in here, if that was not the case.
No, I appreciate it, we're all, health, safety, and welfare is what zoning codes are about.
And that to me is what I think is kind of the hardest part, is, you know, I, I'm not against these things, but I also wanna make sure that we don't have a structure that somehow gets used that puts people in harm.
Mm-hmm.
And, so I just wanna make sure that that's all in there.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it, that is, that is our goal. I'm gonna go back to setbacks, cause I skipped it, cause I kinda wanted to talk about the size of the structure, which we talked about setbacks. I think, um, generally, it makes sense on B, that attached ADUs would have meet the principal structure setbacks, I'm not sure why we would give it relief necessarily. I think the detached is where I tend to have a little bit more conversation with cities, and they, um, struggle, not struggle, but have more thought about how they want them to be. So, the graphics at the bottom are your current accessory structure setbacks, so detached accessory structure, detached garage structure. And what these go through is, you know, um, just a second, I think it'll be easier if I, could you maybe? Cause you kinda haven't looked at these graphics lately. So, like, if you have a lake shore or through lot, this little is, structure is the accessory structure, and it's telling you how far you can be based on where you are. So if you're in the front yard, it's four feet, if you're in the backyard, it's four feet, and I think this is six feet. Um, similar, if you're on a typical lot, if you're next to it, you have, you have to be a little bit farther away from the side lot line. And these are detached garages specifically, if they're in the front, they have to be twenty feet from the street. Um, so, some cities talk about, um, detached ADUs, they often have to meet the accessory structure setbacks. Sometimes folks add, because they feel like it's different to have a shed near your rear line or next to your sideline, but it's a little different to have someone actually living in that structure next to those, so. Anything's fine, I've had cities that are fine, and cities that have made adjustments, so I know it's something that I at least wanna flag for you of, if you think about having a detached structure in the backyard or side yard, how far should it be away from the side lot lines or the rear lot line? Should it be? Is it fine if it's the same? Do you want it to be a little farther away? Um, we probably note that building code slash fire code means that if they want to have an opening, a window or door, they have to be at least five feet away. So, if, if that's a, that's a minimum requirement. I hear what you said.
It might be seven. Building, I, I don't know if it's five or seven separation for fire.
Huh.
One or the other. We'll check that with the building.
I think it's five, but we'll see.
Five for zoning. Yeah, we'll check.
Um, so, thoughts, concerns, do we just say that detached can have the same setbacks as accessory structures? We have small lots, so I'm not suggesting you do more, but sometimes there's a thought process on having a person in a structure in the rear yard, is a little different?
It makes sense to me that you would be more strict about ADU, detached ADUs than accessory structures. If my neighbor's garden shed happens to look into my bedroom window or whatever, that's a little less offensive to me than if there's somebody living in that shed looking out the window at me.
I, I agree.
And what are the primary structure setbacks?
They're different. They're different from district to district, so, that's why I haven't put those on, and that's for-
An average example for single family, for example?
Generally, six feet for the R1As and the, and the R2s, uh, generally ten feet for the R1s. And one setback may get a reduction based on its lot width from side lot line to side lot line, minimum of six, um, or eight.
So, it would go from four to six-ish to six to ten-ish, if we went with the primary structures? I'm good with either, to be honest, but it doesn't seem like a big difference to me.
So, I'm hearing increase it, but not go crazy.
I, I would-
Like, for example, the rear setback is typically, it can be like fifteen feet.
Principal structure setback is fifteen feet.
If we apply that, that would-
Accessory structure is four.
Oh.
So we might, on the sides, we might wanna use kind of the principal maybe, but on the rear, we might wanna go between the two. Is what I'm kind of hearing?
I think that makes sense, because, at, at least conceptually, if you've got two lots back to back, that each have a fifteen-foot setback for the primary structure, so even if you do allow an ADU closer to the property line, the adjoining property owner still has fifteen feet, so you're not up against their living quarters.
Right.
In a way that you could be on the side lot.
Yes. Okay, does-
I have one thought, but I don't, again, don't know how to phrase that, I don't know what's wrong with me tonight. Um, applying to the lakefront property, so I have a lakefront home. I also am on the commons. So I don't know if there's any other commons rules that this could infringe on, or get complicated by. Cause I'm thinking of my own yard, and where I'm gonna put my detached structure once we work all this out. And, again, it might be sitting a, I know I'm gonna have to meet whatever the, the setback requirements are for the commons, but again, commons to me is a little, a little awkward, too, cause there's so much foot traffic.
Lake shore, you have to be aware of there's the fifty-foot setback for ordinary high water level, and this wouldn't be considered a water-oriented accessory structure, so it's gonna have to be fifty feet back.
It's still gonna have to be fifty feet anyways, okay.
That, that's non-
That's great, cause I think I'm twenty feet from the, the lake. I sit really, I sit a lot closer than the other homes. But again, mound is weird, so we keep adding more complexity in, so.
Yep.
So I, I would be in favor of just-
I'm gonna be zoned out.
Attaching this to the principal structure requirements, and I'm not sure if that's what you said prior to the comment or not, and I just say that because I think it makes it cleaner. And also because of what you said about having, I, I look at the back of somebody's garage, or I look at the back of somebody's dwelling, that, that would be different to me.
Yeah. The, I, I will write it that way, if that's what the consensus is, note that, that will in and of itself make ADUs, detached ADUs even harder to do, which I'm not saying is good, bad, or otherwise.
I don't-
I'm just, that is a fact, because people are at fifteen feet back, so.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I don't disagree, and I'm not sure that affects my opinion.
Yeah.
I agree with you, I think that's okay.
If, if we're gonna create ADUs, it could encourage people to make dedicated things, instead of just converting garages all over mound.
Yeah, which, I think I stated, but just to reiterate, converting garages is a multi-step process, because they're not built for residential habitation.
I understand.
So, but, totally, I can start there, and then you can still have a conversation about that. And is that the general consensus, or is that just a few people? And I have a feeling, I know a few that don't, but generally, I'm hitting, seeing head not.
I'm closer to somewhere in between primary and current accessory, but-
Yeah.
But I, I'm not, I, I don't feel very strongly.
Now, Mr. Sastrom's not gonna like me to say this.
Yeah.
But-
She's gonna say it anyway.
You would even apply for a variance at their special circumstances to go around it, and case by case basis.
I do like that comment, because I think if we attach ambiguity to our code, then we just invite it. But if we have people go through the process that's in place, great.
Alright, we'll start there.
Okay.
Uh, setbacks. I'm passing through what we already talked about. Parking. Um, we can do more than I just suggested. Generally, what I've found is that, um, we have required, like, an additional parking stall for the ADU. Um, some cities don't allow, don't require anything additional for the ADU. I can come up with something else in between, if you have a specific direction that you want. I know parking is very much a concern. Um, I also, yeah, there's other, other ways in other communities that I've addressed parking when there's too much, too many cars. Um, but, uh, administration of that rule is also staff-intensive, so I'm not sure that's-
So if there's one stall, does that limit it to one car per ADU?
That's just saying that they have to demonstrate on their property where there can be one designated stall. It doesn't mean that there's, we can't say that they're limited to that many cars, it just, the concern that we've found in other communities is that people were creating ADUs, but no place, but providing no place to park. And then where do the people park? And so this is just ensuring, potentially, that that, but some cities feel like because of the winter parking restrictions, we don't even need to address it, cause they're gonna have to figure it out. Otherwise, why would people stay in those units?
And all, well, I will say, ADUs are prime for two, uh, demographics that don't necessarily always have a car, being college students and people who are old and needing care and don't drive anymore. Um, so, I would actually be for not requiring any additional parking, for that reason, but-
I, I have two dwellings that are near me that have cars parked in the front yard, because there's multiple, I don't think they're necessarily accessory dwelling units, but they just appear to be kind of multifamily.
Multi-generation.
No, no.
No, multifamily homes, okay.
But is that already disallowed?
I'm not positive.
Is it disallowed to park on the lawn?
Yeah.
I'm not positive.
I think so. You can't park on lawns, right? You have to park on improved surfaces.
I don't know that we have anything in our code that-
Oh, you don't?
Says that, that was our, yeah. Don't quote me on that, it's late.
Well, I know, no, I was laughing, cause I was like, I just read that, where did I just read that? I'll stop, have you?
Okay.
Yes, parking, I knew that was a, this is one of those topics. Uh, other people weigh in, we have prob, I hear maybe, I hear we should, and I hear we shouldn't.
If you have a home, and you put an ADU on it, how does that work? You have just-
Well, we require two parking spaces for a home.
Right.
Right? And it can be in the garage.
Right.
If you do an ADU, then you need to show me where you have room in your two garages, plus you have room on your driveway to have three stalls. It's not, it's just making sure that you have. If you have a one-car garage, and you put an ADU on, and you don't have a driveway that's long enough, then you can't really have an ADU. So it's, that's the reason why. Maybe you don't need it, that's why I've done it in different ways.
Just trying to think of the ramifications here.
Yeah, then you're gonna get into the impervious issue.
Correct.
If you're gonna put more concrete down.
Kinda putting, you know, concrete on the side, that you have to park it on, and all that stuff.
Right, but that's part of the layering of, does it make sense in that?
I, my thought is just don't put anything in there, we'll see what happens. If people are abusing it, we always can change it later.
Right, but we can't retroactively make people that are-
Yeah, your grandfather.
Short-term rental conversation, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I would rather put it in, cause it's easier to take it out than it is to grandfather, or to grandfather in the things that we already don't like.
I mean, if we are, I don't know, I struggle, because if we already require two for one single-family home, then-
Put another one in there.
If we're gonna put another dwelling on it, should we require parking, or is it, or not, I don't know. I'm okay either way.
I think it's to my, I'm fine with it, I think we should add something.
I changed my mind.
Again, like I said, I wanna make sure that if we are allowing these things, we're creating positive, healthy, safe environments, and if we're gonna have- And if we're gonna have cars parking in the front yard or encroaching on their neighbor's front yard, I don't like that either. So I would, I'm fine putting language in there too.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That there should be at least one decade spot.
Okay. All right. Owner occupancy. Uh, the typical one that I see in most communities that are first creating an ADU ordinance is A, um, that the owner of the property must continue to occupy at least one of the dwelling units on the property as a primary residence, except for bona fide temporary absence, which that does allow some things, but it does account for you got sick and you went to the hospital and you had to live in a transitional care facility. You, we, and if you wanna put more limits, we can. That's typically why we use that language. Um, technically, or if you look out at national research, they generally don't recommend this language, because it does limit the creation of them. I'm just saying, I'm not advocating. As I said, most of the places I work, we have this kind of provision.
Well, is snowbirding a bona fide temporary absence?
That's something that you would wanna create, uh, have direction to staff policy-wise if that included or not. Or if you got a job transfer for a year and you were living in Florida, and so you couldn't live there, is that, those are the situations that we've heard about as we've worked in places.
And my hearing, right, it probably would really discourage renting even the primary structure, because then you couldn't also rent out the secondary structure.
The idea is that you can only went, rent one of the two, so you always have an owner on site, so you, you, but it doesn't say that you have to live in the primary structure, and that's intentional. So that if you had an aging individual, they could have the smaller of the two and the family or the caretaker could live in the bigger of the two. That's the reason it's worded that way, is so that it doesn't, um, it just says one of them. It doesn't say which one is the owner occupied part.
That looks like a reasonable angle.
On an HOA board, and we use number, we use A. Absolutely.
You're on what?
An HOA board.
Ah.
And we use one. It's almost verbatim what we use.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
I'm good for one.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
You can always change it later.
Yeah.
You can always get less restrictive with it. All right, design considerations. This one in particular, um, is one where it's not an, a pick one and the rest don't apply. They're all about different types of topics sometimes. Um, some folks are very concerned about the design of an atta, a detached ADU, that it should match the principal structure and designer material. Um, some folks put limitations on windows overlooking neighboring properties. They say you can't have them within whatever. Sometimes it doesn't matter based on your setbacks, maybe you don't care, so that, um, is a factor. Some folks require a separate entrance, um, to the ADU, meaning like if you look at a structure, there's a separate entrance. Some of them, some people dislike that look, and so they say that you can't have that. So again, um, that's the second one. You can allow to have two doors, you can prevent having two doors. Uh, many times we do require some type of walkway to get to the ADU, so at least it's safe. That's the reason for E. Um, some people prohibit an exterior staircase leading to an upper story ADU. Sometimes they prohibit it on the front of the structure, but it's okay on the rear of the structure. Um, and then minimum percent of windows facing an alley, which doesn't affect you so much, or public street. All potentials, or you could do none of them, because you don't wanna have additional regulation that you have to sort through. These are just options that we've seen in different places, and nobody's had all of these. Um, generally, it's a couple of them that really resonate to, they're concerned about. So, and I, I don't know. Any, anything that, like, yes, we should do?
Well, I think number one, I think we've talked a lot about that in other, to at least have them complement each other.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I agree.
I, I will say generally, my own personal feeling on this is, I guess I would say I'm generally in favor of pretty heavy regulation of detached structures and much more permissive with, uh, the opposite of drawing a blanket, it's been a long time.
Internal?
Attached, internal.
Or attached, either one.
Um, those structures, it seems to me they require much less regulation. So when we talk about things like design and materials, limitations on windows, things like that, I, generally I'm in favor of that. Just thinking out loud to share my thoughts.
I think that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I agree.
So which of two through seven do you like then? Because some of them are duplicative or slightly different wording of the same topic.
How would two even work?
How would two work?
Yeah.
So some, so in one of the cities that I worked in, it was the ground floor could have windows, but if you had an upper, like half-story, you couldn't have a window that was facing the neighboring property, so that you weren't in that half-story level looking down into someone's yard or over their fence. That was the reason for it. Or you wouldn't have anything that could face the side lot line or that kind of thing.
Yeah, I guess for me, for window, if we're looking at moving the setbacks closer to be for the principal structure setbacks, then I wouldn't necessarily need to see the need for two. Yeah, that makes sense.
Do we care about entrances for, three or four? How many?
I don't, I think five makes sense. I think if you're gonna have a separate entrance, it should be paved.
There needs to be a, a walkway.
Okay.
Are there ADA-related requirements for access for these in general in building code? Or should we be thinking about disability, accessibility?
The building code should cover accessibility, my thing. We're gonna have it go through the building permit process. Similar. All right, nobody, no takers on six or seven, we're good without those? Or do we feel like we really need those? All right, nobody jumped up? Administrative. Um, ADU should not be split from the property with a principal dwelling. ADU may be split from the property. The only way that I could see this happening is if you had a very large lot and like a twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand, which we don't have a lot of those, and they built the ADU in just the perfect spot that you could split it. Otherwise, probably most of the time, people couldn't meet zoning requirements. But many cities specifically say that you can't split the property, just to make sure that nobody tries to.
This, this begs a different question though. We're talking about the building code requirements for it. Is it going to share utilities with the principal structure?
I didn't intentionally put utilities on here, because I knew that we had to have a conversation that was a technical one. And so it will be addressed in here, but it, it wasn't something I was prepared to have a conversation with you all.
These are a little entangled though, because you can't have two sites sharing utilities.
Current. Right, well, and yes, if, depending on every, so when I've done this in other cities, it has to go back to the utility billing and how they do utility billing and how to answer that question about separate or, and I understand how it's related to this question. So that may influence this question. But it wasn't one I wanted to have the conversation, 'cause it's kind of not really a choice. It's kind of a technical, how does the city look at utility billing? And how do they wanna prefer, you know, how does fire, building inspector, building official wanna do it as opposed to you all getting to weigh in on that?
Okay.
So, you're right.
I think A is the clear way to go, or it sets us up for gamification.
Okay.
You mean for avoiding gamification? A is good.
Yes, that's what I meant to say, yeah.
I, I agree, we've got a lot of conversation about the weird lots we have in mound and how they create a problem. I see no reason to encourage that.
All right, last one. Yay. Uh, procedure. Can we have an ADU happen through a building permit? So this, how this would work is if they meet these standards, administratively, we can approve them, similar to a house or similar to any other structure that you have no involvement with. Um, the second option is that there would have to be a registration process. Obviously, some cities go this route, it is more staff-intensive and maybe not a policy decision totally for you, but you can weigh in on that and ultimately it would be the city council. Uh, or you could go through a CUP process, um, which would involve more work, applica, you know, fees and costs on top of others, so you can see which way I'm leaning, I guess, the way I presented those.
I think if, I think if we do this process right, then number one should be just fine, 'cause we'll have this all ironed out with regulations that are appropriate and staff can use their expertise to implement them.
Regarding two, we currently do not have long-term rental licensure requirements, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Right, so if you did this, it would be difficult, 'cause you'd have to work through that as well.
So we're saying number one.
Number one. Are there any other topics related to, I'm just gonna put the pictures up. Is there anything else that jumps out at you as I didn't cover that you think that we should have covered?
It's your first round.
It's your first round.
Anything else that's bothering you if you think about having an ADU on your neighbor's property, not your own?
Anything, there, there's a flavor of it where it's a, uh, backyard office, less than a dwelling unit. Is there anything that would be useful for having something that's not necessarily meant for someone to live in, but for someone to say work in during the day? That would be different than what we have.
I think if someone would put in like a bathroom facility, I assume then they're triggering over. If they have a kitchen and a bathroom, you're gonna maybe think of them as an ADU at that point. We haven't gotten that far.
So what defines an ADU?
An ADU is defined as having a living bathroom and kitchen facilities.
Okay.
So if you would have an office, and a, a lot of times, they would have maybe a stove, and that's gonna be something we're gonna have to clarify. But we wouldn't wanna use these regulations for just an office,
I see.
because this is very specific to the idea of the living part. But you bring up a good point that, um, what makes it a kitchen is something that we have to define.
'Cause I can see someone saying, I have this office, and, but it's really complicated to get the full ADU, so I'm just gonna put a cot up and a hot plate, and this is where someone's gonna live. You know, I could see there being some mentalities towards that. So I think having the definition of what actually makes it and defines it is helpful.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it was a good question to help us better define. Like, what is a kitchen? What does it mean by a kitchen? Does it mean you have to have a stove? And so if they don't have the stove, they have everything else and it's not an ADU?
Yeah. And again, the plumbing with the residential, we know someone's living in there and, you know, maybe it's okay to have a composting toilet, I don't know.
Oh yeah, someone asked me about that. Is that at this meeting that someone asked me that? I think it was one of my staff members asked.
Yeah, those are regulated under the county, right?
I'm, I'm thinking of this, sorry, of the situation of, especially lake properties, of having a bunkhouse type, so they're not really living there, but they want a separate facility for, you know, family.
For the family to live in when they come for the summer.
You haven't allowed those yet. I think those have been not allowed. Yeah, they're not allowed. I would wanna, is that something you were advocating for or questioning if they would be allowed?
Well, is there, it, um, so that wouldn't be allowed, because they're not living in it. But if they, it was designed exactly like that one, has a bathroom and a kitchen out, 'cause they want the teenage boys to keep it out there. Um, that's not an ADU, 'cause they don't live there. So that wouldn't be allowed? But I'm wondering, why wouldn't that be allowed?
No, I'm saying if they had the, what I'm envisioning of the old-school bunkhouses with just like a sh, a structure with three bunk beds, that's not allowed.
Like an ice shack or?
What?
You think of like an ice shack?
No, I, like on old lake properties.
I can draw off ice shacks and then-
I, in old properties, I've, not here, but other places.
Okay.
Where you just have like, the place when the all, when you have all the family come and you need, you need extra beds, you have this room basically that's built, that basically just has bunk beds in it, and that's where everybody stays. There's no bathroom, there's no kitchen, it's just, and, right, and that hasn't been allowed.
Okay, gotcha.
But if you did an ADU, technically, if they met all of these requirements, you could do it, but they'd have to meet all of these requirements.
But they aren't residing in it. Temporarily, they can reside, they don't have to be full-time.
This is not about saying that someone has to live in it, it's just saying if you're gonna have a structure that has, yeah.
It has to have these things.
It has to have these minimum standards. I wanted to go back to what you said, 'cause I actually didn't hear it, and I wanted to make sure if there was-
Oh, I, I believe, well, onsite water treatment systems are really complicated, and I think they're covered through the county.
Oh, which is different than a composting toilet, but yes, you are right. And ISTS, like an individual sewage treatment system, is a whole different things. Yes. So I think the city would require it to be hooked up.
These will all have to be hooked up to municipal sewer and water.
Yeah, but it might be good to clear, that's the question, is do we clarify that, so it's like clear? All has to be hooked up to municipal water and sewer, just so we don't have questions.
Yes.
And must have a bathroom.
Yes.
Was, okay.
That's, I, so, I'm just, that's my understanding from our previous conversation. Now that we've gone through all of this, is this what we want?
Uh, makes sense.
'Cause I'm only drafting what I understand you all to want. So after all of this, are we still good with doing accessory dwelling units? They do make sense, we wanna move forward.
I guess I was thinking guest house is a better way of looking at it. So is a guest house the same as an ADU?
Why couldn't it be?
But why couldn't it be? It's got the same criteria, it just may not have somebody living in it twelve months of the year.
If you want, I think if you wanna build a structure that people can live in just on occasion, on weekends, you can do that, if you wanna put the money into it, as long as it meets these standards.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Meaning it has a bathroom and has a kitchen.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause obviously, that's what I'm thinking of, you know, I wouldn't have people living in it. Uh, but I wanna have an option for somebody to stay, but I also, we have a pool and I want it to be a part pool space slash, plus I don't like people showering in my house, so. I'm showering in that little A, ADU. But then they can sleep there if they don't wanna go.
And we have a blanket ban on short-term rentals in general, right? Okay, that just applies to this, good.
Yes, that will apply to this.
So Rita had one question about another topic, that's probably in, in the, the ends of the bell curve here, but, do we, I, I believe right now, we have a requirement of having basically one street entrance per residence. We can't have multiple driveways. Do we wanna say anything about sort of retaining that with a detached ADU, so that somebody on a corner lot isn't creating a second driveway?
I'll think about that.
I, I don't know if we care, but, 'cause it would be having a parking spot.
Or it would be a small percentage, I would think. Yeah, I fall in that category. I'm on the dead end.
I, I hadn't thought about that. The question is, do we need to specifically state it, or is it already covered in the code that we don't?
I, yeah, I don't know. Or maybe it just refers back to the original, or the-
Nope.
Current code.
All right, any other thoughts? Did I tell you about? The next one will be better.
No, I have lots of ideas.
She's designing this. All right.
Okay, moving on.
Solar. The direction that we re, relieved, uh, received last time was that you are interested in having specific regulations related to solar, um, that we would have it as an allowed accessory use. Um, it, historically, the staff has been allowing it on roofs. It's just that it's not really in the code, so it'd be easier and clearer for other folks and ourselves that you just specifically allow it. Um, the questions that we wanted to just talk about briefly, making sure we're correct that solar, how we wanna do it, the types, the zoning districts, um, some specific standards. So you have been allowing it, you probably have some in the community. We don't wanna make this overly complicated, and I know there's a question on some of these of like, do we do it? Do we really need it? Could we do without? 'Cause it just adds complexity, but my understanding is solar panels will only be allowed on the rooftops of structures. They will not be allowed as part of like canopy shading parking. That was what we talked about last time. If you have a parking lot and you wanna have shade structure over it, we don't want solar panels on it. You don't have any of those in the community, but it's nicer to just put things in proactively now. All right. Um, my understanding is we can allow it in any district, that we're not gonna be limiting where they are. We can allow it on any types of structure, we're not really interested in, whether it's commercial or offices or industrial, whoever wants it, we're good. All right.
Rita, um,
Yeah.
if we're talking about commercial buildings, the requirement of having the same pitch as the roof and the ten-inch limitation on the height over the roof might, might cause them trouble.
Which is the question of the next one, which is that picture on the lower right? Which is the question of the next one, which is that picture on the lower right? Of whether you can, um, that's the C, and I can look more into the language again, just to make sure it's the right language. But the idea of flush mounted, which is the upper right picture, that it can't be more than ten inches from the roof. The C one tries to get into, if you're not gonna have a pitched roof, then you can have the panels on there and have some type of angling of the panels, to better accommodate it. Um, and I can double check if that's enough for a flat roof. But that's where that language was intended to address exactly the question that you had of like, what happens if it's a flat roof? How do you get the pitch that you need for the solar panel? Um, and I can double check it, cause there is a, there is a resource here in, well, they're a national nonprofit, and they have a staff member that is from Minnesota, that is versed in this area and can verify. So I assume if B makes sense and C makes sense, these are just general requirements that we've seen, nothing... Basically, you can't get higher, um, can't exceed ten inches from the roof if you have to have, cause you don't have a pitch enough roof, you can do something, but we don't want them to be very noticeable. That's kind of the intent, right?
So this pitch is less than five percent above the pitch of the roof on the bottom?
So I don't know if that picture is exactly five percent or not, cause that picture came from a different source than C. But we will make sure that we get the flat roof, um, and understand what that will be. Alright, um... This one, we struggled a little bit with. It is something that is talked about, um, that they should be designed to blend into the building without negatively impacting the performance of the system and to minimize glare on adjacent properties and vehicle traffic. The only concern we had is this is a fairly general statement, and so maybe opens the door for folks to complain about the solar panels that are installed, and how do you, how do we measure this? How do we decide that it works or it doesn't work? Um, so if that's something that is important to you, I can try and see if there's other language that's more specific. I think that's gonna be challenging, but I certainly am welcome to go do a little bit of digging to see if there's others. Um, otherwise, if it's not something you're totally concerned about, if we are really talking about roof-mounted solar, then maybe we don't need to have something like this, cause there's just not that many options.
Is gl- oh, go ahead.
I think the idea is important to me anyhow, um, but I wonder if it's rather than trying to use subjective language like that, if it's more effective to use more objective regulations like roof-mounted solar panels only, with certain height limitations and angles and whatnot, that ultimately is gonna achieve that community aesthetic.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. If we're only gonna do roof-mounted, and we're only gonna do those other things on the previous side, do we need this?
Yeah, so I just took what you said, used more words to say the same thing, I think, then?
No, I'm just confirming, you are, okay. Alright, so...
Do we know if, if glare for neighbors and/or traffic is a noted problem with these?
I don't think it's as notable a problem from roof-mounted ones, just the height. I know that it has been a concern for ground-mounted, which you all have decided you don't think is appropriate in the community.
Right.
From the last conversation. But I have heard that in other communities of that being a concern. I'm not, now, I'm sure that, that may just be, you know how it is, like one example of a bad operator, and maybe they're all fine if you do it correctly, and that's my only caveat that I don't know, so.
And I think it's hard, how do you measure what true distraction is? I mean, I could, I mean, it's a very personal thing, I might think very differently, so.
Yep, that's why we were thinking, this is something, but maybe not as necessary, given the so, the rooftop, okay?
The mounting, yeah.
Yep, um, and then utility, this one also, um, generally, it makes sense. I'll double check if we're as concerned about it with a roof-mounted, but the idea that the system should be placed underground, um, probably more of an issue if you have, uh, ground-mounted, yes.
Mine is not ground-mounted, it's mounted on the side of the building.
Yep.
So, I had some issues with that.
Okay.
Aren't some of these walls inside structures, yeah?
They can be on the wall. Ours, mine's on the outside. It ties into the electrical box, so there's a panel there, so on the side.
Okay.
As long as it's not, you know, not ugly and anything like that, but yeah, so I would...
The wording is not quite right, you're saying. If it was, no, I'm hearing like, we need to make sure it's tightened, so if you can have the outside of a wall, but it's not just hanging out on itself in the yard.
Correct. And that's the only way they're gonna, they're gonna install it anyways.
Yep. Okay. I, oh, did I have one more? Oh, just the abandonment.
Yeah, that's good.
The idea of...
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Oh, procedure, sorry.
Building permit.
It's a building permit, you don't have to come and see you.
Yes, I had to get a building permit.
Yeah, I'm good with that, we can keep doing that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, hey, look at that. Anything that you think we're missing on these, that you wanna make sure that we regulate?
Is there any relationship to solar panels and ADUs about them being powered only by solar, or anything around that that we wanna be looking at? Or is that just whatever they wanna do will allow?
Uh, we weren't thinking about linking them to...
I, I actually don't know, it's just, we're talking about them together, so they're both in mind.
Yeah, they're, you, they're both in your head, though they are separate topics, but I totally get it. It's like, oh, we just talked about it. No, um, you could. Alright, yes, Mr.?
No, no, I'm just...
Okay. EV chargers, last one.
Yes.
Uh, my understanding from our last conversation was that the city was interested in making sure it was clear that they are allowed, but we weren't going to take many proactive steps yet, related to them. Meaning, um, that we weren't going to require them to be installed, or require, um, the installation of the future systems. Um, if that's not correct, I can add other language, but this is really focusing on, we'll specifically state in the code that vehicle charging stations are allowed as a permitted accessory use in all districts. Um, we could talk about levels, we could not talk about levels, it doesn't necessarily matter. Um, I'm not saying there's an advantage, it just depends on whether, those will, potentially, they could change over time, but we can adjust that if necessary. Um, so it depends if you wanna be clear or not on that, but I think the general idea is that we just allow them.
Yeah, I don't really know about this.
So is the city going to have some of these as part of a public, public parking spot, or is that, that, that didn't come up? I don't think, did that come up as part of the conversation?
I think that the city has in the past looked at opportunities to pursue it, and at the time that they were looking at it, the financials didn't work out, but I think they were going to revisit that.
I think that came out of the workshop, didn't it?
Yeah, that was what I remember from that meeting.
I think that's what we heard.
Right, so this is more about, one thing is technically, if something's not specifically stated in the code, it's not allowed. Now, obviously, solar panels, you know, there's like a gray line where you probably wouldn't say no, but one idea is if you are going to promote something like this, it's good to have it in the code, so people can see it, and they don't have to question or call staff to see if it's allowed. But we don't have to necessarily do a lot, we can just include it, and then people know. So that's one method of advocacy that ha- has been recommended, that's like the first step. You know, and the second step is to do requirements, if you're gonna have parking, new parking, et cetera, et cetera. And then the conversation at the joint meeting was, we weren't there yet, um, maybe sometime in the future, but at this point, we weren't ready to have that, that conversation.
Have there been requests for public electric charging stations?
I don't know about that, if there have been requests for public charging stations?
I don't know, um, myself, that I've received any.
So, I, I realize I still might, I was in the minority on this at the last meeting, and I might still be in the minority, but I just wanted to clarify one point on the potential for promoting electric vehicle charging. If I remember right, this, this level one, two, and three was like ready, but you don't have the system, and then is that...
This actually, one, two, and three has to do, um, with the charging capacity and how fast it charges.
Oh, okay.
You are correct. When I went last time, I had like three different levels also, they had different terms. And I, I don't think I brought the slide with, but it's like, one is to just promote, you know, allow them. The second is to require the installation of all the wiring, so that they didn't have to actually put them in, but they actually actu- had to get it ready, EV ready, so that the parking lots were ready. The conduit was already in the ground, so you didn't have to dig anything up to put it in. And the third is to actually require so many charging spaces, charging stations per parking spaces. That's kind of the, that is levels, but this is talking about.
Different levels.
Like level three is, you can see the DC fast charging, so like the Tesla chargers are those tall ones, the level three. Level two is kind of the more commercial ones, they're faster than the smaller ones that you might have in your garage. That'll take a long time to charge. I think most of the times, people are in twos and threes now, there's not a lot of ones as much. Doesn't charge very fast.
My question is just more of a knowledge gap, and I might still be in the minority, so I accept that. But for the potential of being ready, but not, for example, for commercial only, for redos of parking areas of a certain size and above, i- is that a move where if someone were to redo a parking area, and then they would have to decide later they wanted to add an EV charging, do they have to undo work that was done, or is it, is it...
Part of it depends on where the electrical system is and how it's coming out, so it's a hard one to answer. But that's one of the reasons why in communities that I've worked in that have lots of new development.
I see.
They're requiring some form of, some form of like charging stations, and then also EV ready, so that when they do all that new construction, they're getting things in, and they're, they're thinking about it. They're making sure the electrical systems are designed, so that it'll make sense. Otherwise, you may not put things or have everything running the right way. But what we talked about at the last meeting was, we're not seeing a lot of new construction. We're seeing, you know, is that, are we at that point at this stage? If we're gonna see redevelopment, do we really wanna add that on to, um, where people are going? Maybe you do, that was the conversation.
Well, this is gonna change, because EVs are coming.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And just with that clarification, has anyone's opinions changed on it, am I in the minority still? Or about the potential of requiring, say, commercial new construction of parking lots over a certain size?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Some kind of percentage.
Yeah.
Of having actual chargers or EV ready?
I've got actual chargers.
Oh, well...
What do you think?
So I, I would go aggressively. I, I didn't think anyone would even agree, agree on the first one. But, but I'm particularly concerned about this scenario where if you're gonna redo a parking lot, and then you sell it, and the next person is gonna, they decide they wanna, they wanna put in EVs, and they have to undo and redo a whole bunch of work that you couldn't have done when you did it the first time. And if it would make it easier for that second seller to put in EVs, I would be okay with incremental imposed development cost.
Nope, that's fine. I mean, it's totally up to you. One option is to look at this part of it, and then have additional information that gets at, you know, what is the market going to be? How much does it really cost? Is it really that much of a cost savings? It seems like you're wanting maybe some more information before you decide. And we could certainly do this route now, and then also add on providing more information to kind of decide if it makes sense or not. Cause you don't have all the information. Like, you're asking me, how much does it cost? I don't have a number. Maybe that tips it, maybe it doesn't tip, if I tell you how much a charger is, how much it costs. Maybe those things are helpful information I haven't given you, those pieces, because at the last meeting, it was like, not interested.
Yeah, my recol- cause I, I don't know if I'm quite as aggressive as you are, but I, I'm on board with you. My recollection is that the city council did not share our enthusiasm, and so it was just sort of abandoned.
Well, challenges would have to go to them next.
Exactly, any council, councilman, any, any idea if, if, if that, if it would be received?
Is there an advan- I'm sorry, is there an advantage to promoting it? Is there some environmental, um, impact on mound if we promote it?
Not sure I understand the que- is there an advantage to taking that next step?
Yeah, should we be promoting the use of EVs?
Saying, hey, we have, we have parking, we have charging stations available, please consider electric cars.
And it is within our...
Does that improve our environment?
Yeah.
What are, what are the numbers on it?
That's what the government says.
Yeah.
I feel like I shouldn't weigh in on whether it's improved, I, it's just one of those. It is generally talked about as the next evolution of cars, and where people are going, and that, do you wanna be trying to have that, make sure that things that are happening that are new are planning for it? Is this the right time to do that, um...
Yeah, I'd rather be proactive than be active.
And it is within our purview as the, between the planning commission and the council, to raise the bar for what developers are allowed to do in the city. And if we collectively decide that we want this to support, um, uptake of demand of, of electric vehicles, and we want people who have EVs to feel comfortable living here, if this is something we want, I think it'd be a great thing. But again, if it's not gonna get accepted by the council, it's a moot point.
Maybe we need more information to have the position statement to support why we think it's important for the community.
Yeah, I'd be curious to hear from the community if it's even a value that they have, if it's, you know, do you see yourself getting an EV car in the next five years, you know? So I, I mean, I guess...
Boy, there are a lot of them.
I don't know, I mean, yeah, maybe there are, maybe I'm just not looking.
Look in your rearview mirror, it's probably a Tesla, seriously.
There's another aspect of this that I just wanna bring up. So, if we're talking about putting in infrastructure, and then maybe not using it, I, I would, I feel pretty confident saying that there's an order of magnitude difference in cost between a one and a three. And I don't know that anybody's really gonna wanna talk about a one, even now, much less five, ten years from now. So that means that we put in substantially more infrastructure that may or may not be used. The other trouble I have there is like, if we talk about the economics of this, if there's a residence, if there's somebody that's building a, a multifamily residence, and they wanna put this in, they would figure that out for themselves, and by, they may or may not have that be kind of a perk of living there, to be able to top off your tank, so to speak, for free. I don't think the economics, I, I don't think the city should be paying for people to charge their batteries without cost, so then...
Well, this wouldn't be free.
That's my point, so then, if, then, then any given commercial operation or whatever would have to figure out the economics for themselves about whether or not it's worth putting in that infrastructure, instead of requiring to put in the infrastructure, and maybe not collect any revenue from it.
I think you, you raise a good point. I think we should remember also that the people who, cause we're not, obviously, it's gonna be permitted in residential construction, nobody's suggesting we wouldn't allow people to put EV chargers in their homes. The bigger question is, are we going to require commercial properties to take some sort of steps? And I think we should remember that the users of EV charging facilities at commercial properties are probably not mound residents. They're people coming from further away, because people who live in mound and have a residential charger don't need to develop when they go to the hardware store and then return back home.
Right.
And so I, I recall at our joint sessions, I don't remember who it was, but somebody talked about users of the trail, driving their EVs here, parking and charging while they use the trail. I think that use scenario makes more sense, but those aren't gonna be mound residents, at least not primarily, probably, that are using them. I don't know how that changes the calculus, but it's something we probably got to...
Yeah, then you help just do ROI calculation, that's all.
Which is not really related to zoning, that's related to like if the government, if the city was going to take on doing the charging stations, but yes.
Well, and just to muddy the water, there are solar-powered EV stations too.
But are they an accessory dwelling unit?
At Costco or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, what I'm hearing is that the idea of permitting them makes sense, and we're still questioning the next level, and whether the city goes down that road or not. Is that something that, um, it, it wasn't the charge that was given in the joint meeting? So, a couple of options I can see are, we do investigate some additional information. You ask the council, once we get to this point of like, we're recommending this, and we'd like to study this a little bit more. Is that okay, council, before we have staff spend time on it? Those are some options, or we park it until next joint meeting, and we get this in place, and then we talk about it next year. Um, and I'm happy, those are just three options I can see, you may come up with other ones, just, um, how do we wanna proceed? And, and council member, you probably can give some clarity maybe about how you think the planning commission may or may not, should move forward?
I, I mean, we were all in the meeting together. I think the council was a hundred percent for getting more, gathering more information. Um, but it didn't seem like anybody was in a rush to implement anything at this point. I would be most interested in cost, you know, to make any decisions.
Feasibility.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, um, before we move on, if we, with the, um... In some cities, you just allow them, and you say that you can have an EV charger station, but some cities do have some provisions that I thought were kind of good to think about, which is why I included them. Um, one is the idea that if, if you have it, you should have it, if you have, particularly in commercial spaces, it should be ADA accessible. Um, they should be protected by wheel stops with ballers, so they don't get knocked over. Hopefully, they just do these things, so maybe we're over-regulating, we don't need to, we don't need to, I'm fine. I'm just, these are some things that I have.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Um, uh, that they should be posted with signage that says that only EV people can park there, just so that they're actually free.
A la Costco.
Yep, and then light lighting, so that people can actually see what they're doing, no matter what time they're using it. And again, these wouldn't be for your residential home, this would be if you did it in a, in a commercial space, um, or... So if that made sense, we can include them, we don't have to, we can just say they're allowed and let folks do it. Nope, we like them, okay.
Makes sense.
Alright, uh, that concludes our moving forward on three of the work plan items, I'm very excited. Um, cause sometimes we don't, uh, we have so many other things that we don't get a chance to move forward. So the next step to just summarize is I go back and draft the regulations. Then we come back to you again at some point when it makes sense, cause we already have a meeting. Um, and you review them, and then after that, we would go to a public hearing. So one difference is we'll probably move the mi- potentially, the mixed use, we'll go to a public hearing next, cause you kind of were pretty good with it, so we'll make the changes, and then you'll actually do a public hearing for that. This one, we'll see you again before we do a public hearing, cause you'll actually wanna see the wording and how it all fits together. Um, but we'll start working on this, and...
Okay, further questions for Rita?
Well, this was a lot of work and really well put together. Thank you, Rita, is there lots to digest?
Good, I'm glad, and thanks for the good direction.
Good direction of debate and discussion.
Okay, moving on, uh, council liaison report, Kathy, anything to bring up?
You know, I, I really don't, I was gonna bring up the for, the switching of our time to six o'clock, and we covered that earlier, so.
Good. Sarah, anything from you?
Um, no, uh, it's busy, uh, election, we're busy, uh, building permits are busy, phone calls are busy, lots of real estate folks calling, um, special events are ra- have been ramping up. Uh, we've got lots of stuff forthcoming, uh... Uh we've got lots of stuff forthcoming, uh a couple fishing contests. Uh, uh the.
The lake's nice one.
Far- farber's Market will start, uh end of, uh end of May. So yeah, lots of stuff going on.
Is there gonna be an open house at Artesa when they're done?
I would anticipate that, but I do not know that for sure, we will ask.
Okay. Alright, hearing nothing else. Thank you for coming, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
We have motion, second discussion. Hearing not all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post pose, aye. Motion carries, same to the coming.